All right, so we'll get started. Good evening. Today is September 12th, 2022. Thank you for joining us for in-person and Contois Auditorium and online for the Burlington City Council meeting. The time is now 6:25, so we're running a little bit behind, but we're going to catch up. We're going to begin our agenda this evening with a motion to adopt our agenda. Counselor Hightower.
I move to adopt the agenda as listed on board docs.
Thank you, Counselor Hightower. There's a motion. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Shannon. Is there any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
And any opposed, please say no. We have an agenda, which brings us to our next item, which is 2.01, which is a communication and expected executive session. This is an update regarding collective bargaining with the BFFA, which is our fire union. We do anticipate that this executive session will last approximately one hour. And normally what we do is before there are motions to go into executive session, would turn to either counsel or the administration if you feel that there's anything that we can, any information we can give to the public at this time. And if there is, great. If not, if you could just indicate so.
This is with respect to the executive session on firefighter. I mean, it's generally, the nature of the collective bargaining process is there's very little we can say about the bargaining until it's completed. And this is the, maybe just the broader context we can share is that we have four unions, we have completed the contracts for the other three unions, the Burlington Firefighters Association is the final contract. We've been in, started this process a number of months ago. The conversations have accelerated recently when we've completed the other, the other contracts, and we're looking forward to briefing the council on where those negotiations stand tonight.
Wonderful. Thank you, Mayor Weinberger. With that, we'll go to the first, there are two motions to go into executive session. We'll go to the first of the two motions, and we'll look to Counselor Shannon.
I move that the council find the premature general public knowledge of information concerning negotiations of labor relations agreements with employees would clearly place the city at a substantial disadvantage with such negotiations.
Thank you, Counselor Shannon. Seconded by Counselor McGee. All the, are there, is there any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say no. The motion passes, which brings us to the second motion. Counselor Shannon.
Based upon that finding, I move that the council go into executive session to receive confidential updates on labor relations agreements with employees.
Thank you, Counselor Shannon. Seconded by Counselor McGee. And to this, and to that motion, it would also include the mayor's staff, Attorney John Maitland, HR Director Karen Durfee, CIO Catherine.
Recording in progress.
Oh, CIO Catherine Shad, City Attorney Jared Pellerin, and Acting Fire Chief Libby. With that, all those in favor, or is there any discussion?
Recording in progress.
Is there any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
And any opposed, please say no. That motion passes, and we would, we will move into executive session. We do that downstairs. And again, we expect to be back in open session, hopefully by around 7:15. Might be a little bit later, but we're going to do our best. Thank you. So we're back in open session, and the next item on the agenda is 3.01, which is a work session on board docs and alternatives to board docs. For this work session, this was a priority that came out of the council retreat in May, and we're going to be receiving a presentation from our CIO, Scott Barker. But he is not here with us right now. So we were looking for Scott, who I believe is in the building, but not inside Contois. So if we can just, we'll just wait for a minute. Someone had texted him to see if he is able to make it down here at this time. And at this point, we are getting close to 7:30, so we may delay this presentation and then move on to the public forum. public forum inside Contois, and there is one person who has signed up to speak during public forum that is online. Given, given that, just to keep us moving along, we'll, we'll hold off on item 3.01 and move on to item 4.01, which is the public forum. Before we begin public forum, just a few items of information. The system on the table in front of us has three lights. A green light will shine when you start speaking, a second yellow light when you have 30 seconds left, and then the last red light will shine when your time is up. We ask that you please complete your comments when the sound indicates that your time is up, so everyone has the same amount of time to speak. There's a hybrid system for public forum. If you wish to speak, you can go online to burlingtonvt.gov-publicforum, and a form will come up, and then we'll populate that form, and we'll come into a spreadsheet that I can see, and then we'll be able to call on you in the order when you submit the form. As been our practice, Burlington residents will have first priority, and we will go to Burlington residents in Contois who have submitted a form in person, then Burlington residents online, then back to Contois for non-Berlington residents, and then back to online for non-Berlington residents. The only request that we make is that you use respectful language when you speak during public forum. We're much more able to hear you and listen to you if you are respectful, and would ask that you please not personalize your comments and direct them to me as the chair. With that, we have three people signed up for public forum who are all Burlington residents that are in Contois. The first is Sharon McCarthy. Sharon, please come forward. Welcome, and happy to hear your comments. And the next speaker will be Pike Porter after that.
[inaudible]
Oh, we didn't say that. You have two minutes. And please, if you could just make sure that the microphone is on, there's a green light that comes on right in front of you on the microphone. You just press where it says push.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you. Thanks a lot.
My name is Sharon, and I'm happy to be here. So with all due respect to all concerned, our city is suffering from a lot of the decisions that you have made in the last two years. We have become overrun with homelessness and drugs, gangs, and random shootings, not to mention the crime and the theft that is rampant. These people are going rogue in every area of downtown. Defunding our police and decreasing the force was a fantastic error in your judgment. Burlington is now a city that is not being cared for, and its citizens are suffering from your choices. Unruly people are setting up housing tents and squatting in public areas that used to be illegal and considered loitering. It was not allowed. We have a segment of the population being drawn here, and they are going rogue because they know there is no oversight that is enforced. The sanitation situation alone is a problem. They use fountains in backyards as bathrooms. My backyard is one of them. And trash is everywhere. They stay up until four and five in the morning, fighting and drinking at different locations. Pearl and Battery is one of them, keeping us up all night long with their ruckus. It's disturbing what is happening to the city. Let me be clear that I have a heart for the homeless, and I certainly feel that those of us who are more fortunate need to put in place a solution for those who cannot afford housing, and we need to take care, but in an organized and productive way, not like this giving free rein to do whatever, wherever, however, one pleases without any rules and regulations in place. This used to be, as I said, loitering, and it was not allowed. We used to have a vibrant, beautiful city. No longer, the economy is suffering. Businesses are closing, and people are leaving in droves. Because of the decline in safety and morale of our city servants, police, fire, ambulance, social workers, et cetera, we all need to work together with our police officers, not either/or. Since when did the rights of the homeless override my rights as a tax-paying citizen? My taxes went from 6,000 to 10,000 this year, and I don't feel safe. You need to think about what you're doing, and you need to, I mean.
Thank you.
Everything is, this city used to be thriving.
Thank you. Thanks so much. Our next speaker is, our next speaker is Pike Porter, to be followed by Todd LaCroix.
I'm here to just emphasize the emails that I sent to you this weekend, also to ask or to advise you that I don't believe that the lease, the beta technologies lease that will be in front of you today, has been approved, much less seen by the Airport Commission, which I understand is just really a symbolic position with no authority, but I would think there should be at least some acknowledgement that they should have some role in encumbering airport land for 40 years or more. That said, in principle, I approve this lease. However, in practice, I have reservations, mainly because Nick Longo, the airport director, has identified a parcel near Airport Parkway, near three parcels with eight units in it, all rentals, where he says that this is the only location where a large new airport maintenance facility can be installed. This doesn't seem right to me. It seems like if there's room on the West Valley for beta technologies, there should be room for an airport maintenance facility, so as not to further encumber, further harass the quality of life of the tenants, the families that are still living there on Airport Parkway. So I think that's all I need to say. With regard to the ranked choice voting, I certainly approve. I don't think anyone who's only received 40% of the popular vote should be in there. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Todd LaCroix, to be followed by Robert Bristow Johnson, and then we will move to online.
Quality, not quantity of police. That's the real problem. You guys are just talking about numbers and budgets, but you don't talk about the real issues. Let's talk about some real issues. There are more registered gun dealers in America than McDonald's, Wendy's, Burger Kings, and Taco Bells and Starbucks combined, okay? While all these restaurants have been independent, going out of business, and most of them are ex-military and ex-people with badges, selling these weapons. Now, 20 years of the war on terror, what is the result of this, as they promised to make us happier and safer? All they have done is managed to make everything worse. Let me give you the numbers. Right now, children, our number one cause of death amongst our children is guns. More than 6,500 children aged up to 19 are shot and killed in the U.S. every year, and 1,500,000 are shot and wounded, and an average of 51 kids dead a day. And the psychological impact goes deeper, with about 3 million witnessing it annually, this violence brought to us by men with badges and their for-profit prison systems and our dysfunctional parents who want to tell us, the children and the youth, that it's our fault, when they have given us $30 trillion in debt for wars? And police forces that treat us like we don't belong in our own towns, like we don't belong in our own families, like we don't belong, like we're Taliban. They hunt us. They put us in schools that are like prison systems, and then prison systems that are even worse, and then you wonder why everybody's so angry.
Our next speaker is Robert Bristow Johnson, and then we do have one person who has signed up online, and we will go to that person next.
It's a hard act to follow. So this is about redistricting, and a map that you're looking at tonight. It says it's a seven ward, 12 counselor map, but it's not really seven wards. It's actually five wards and two half wards. Now imagine you're in, on this map, either Ward 3 or Ward 7. Let's say Ward 3. On the even-numbered years, everybody in the city gets to vote for city council except you. How are you going to feel about that? If you're in Ward 7 on an odd-numbered year, everybody in the city gets to weigh in on city council except you. Who wants to be in that ward? So we've heard some complaints about, well, these district counselors, they have to represent twice as much, and they, they have twice the constituency, but they get paid the same, they, they get the same vote, and they get the same term, length of term. Those are four persons in this city, 1/100 of 1% of the population of the city that are disadvantaged. But otherwise, every voter in the city is treated equally in the current 8-12 system. So imagine you're in that 16%, that's, you know, Wards 3 or 7, and what we get to tell the district council is, well, if you, if you don't like it, don't run for office. You don't have to do that. What are we going to tell these folks in Wards 3 and 7? If you don't like it, don't vote? So I have a, even though I had something to do with the map, I have a fundamental problem with the notion of the 7-12 map. Just thought I'd tell you why.
Thank you very much. We do have, we do have one person who has signed up online, a Burlington resident. I would leave it to you to just sort of find this person if you could, or if Erin can, is Bob Duncan. And then if you can enable that person's microphone. Okay, we'll give them, we'll give them a minute.
Hi, this is Erin Stetson. I'm currently looking for Bob Duncan in the attendees right now. I'm not seeing him, but I'm continuing to look.
Okay, thank you. Okay, it appears as though that person can't be located online. With that, we'll close the public forum at 7:40 and return to item 3.01, which was the work session on board docs. And at the risk of repeating myself, for this work session, this was a priority that came out of the council retreat in May. We'll have a presentation from our CIO, Scott Barker, and then we'll have time for questions from the council and a discussion on next steps in this process. CIO Barker, thank you so much for being with us this evening.
You are welcome. Do you, I think everybody has the presentation in board docs. Do you need me to bring it up and throw it up on a screen?
If you, if, if we can, that would be great, yes.
I don't know why not. Do you have it? Do you have it? Oh, there it is. All right. You can bounce to the first one. So when we started talking about board docs replacement, it was at the impetus of, I think I've spoken with several people on the board, on the council, and the mayor as well, as Catherine, and even Lori and I have had some conversations. There's several reasons, you can go down, that we want to, that we need to look at it, the first and foremost, and these, again, these are all things that people have talked about in the past. And board docs is certainly a little long on the tooth. It's probably, Lori can probably tell me better, but I bet it's at least eight or nine years old. But responsive design is one of the first things we talk about, where it's not really built to do, to work anywhere effectively, except on desktops or laptops, so it's not built to work on tablets or phones, things like that. There's the improved accessibility and equity. Those two things go hand in hand, and if you were to look at putting board docs and the sites that board docs creates through any of the free accessible, accessibility meters, they score well below 50%. 75% is where you have to be. Above 75%, you typically won't get sued for accessibility issues. So there's some major accessibility issues, and as we all know, if you can't get to something from, if you're blind or visually impaired, you have motor or dexterity or cognitive issues, those accessibility issues pervade throughout the current system. In terms of increasing the efficiency for someone like Lori and President Paul, when you all work on building the agendas, modern search architecture is one of the pieces that we've heard a lot. I know there's some people that have figured out ways to make the modern, the search in open docs work, but there's much more modern applications for search docs, or search engines. And then community visibility. One of the things we've heard a lot is how do we, how can we do a better job of managing the boards and commissions, and the vacancies, and terms, and seats, and things like that? And something like board docs has a difficulty doing that, but there are other systems out there that, that do allow for some of those improvements. So we can, so the next one. So we started a process based on all of this. We put an RFP together. We put it out in late June, early July, and we asked interested parties to submit, and we gave a, we gave a two-week deadline for asking questions. We asked questions, posted those on our RFP site, and then another two weeks to respond to the proposal. Having been on that side of the table in the past, generally speaking, four weeks is more than enough time to pull a proposal together. We unfortunately only got two. We got one from a web developer that was just going to create a custom website, and we got one from a company called Granicus, which is, they build specific municipal-purposed sites that are not only websites, but also what we're looking at from a board docs replacement. We started reviewing them, and it quickly became evident that the web developer, the custom web developer, wasn't going to deliver what we were really looking for. And so we did ask for a brief demo. We invited Lori, we invited Catherine Shad, we invited several other people in innovation and technology and across the city to come in and take a look, just to see what specifically about board docs, the replacement for board docs, how that was going to work. And what we came up with is, we do think that board docs is, or that Granicus is probably viable solution, but I don't know that it's the only one out there, and I'm not 100% sure that we want to jump into the, that boat right now without seeing anything else. So in reality, there's four options that we could look at. One is, we could continue with just using board docs. We can explore to see if there are any updated versions of board docs that would meet the requirements that we'd have. We could reopen the RFP process, and in reality, that may be the best option we have for doing this, is to reopen the RFP process and see if we can get other respondents, or even reopen the RFP process and actually pointedly look at certain companies if we wanted to find out if they were interested, and at least alert them. What we heard ironically, two days after we closed the RFP, we got a marketing email, just literally a marketing email out of the blue for another company that we do use some of their modules here at the city. They asked us to come to a webinar to show us their board and agenda management system. I'm like, where were you two weeks ago? Where, how did you not see the RFP? And then finally, we could decide, as a, as a group, we could just decide to go to Granicus. I'm kind of leaving it a little bit here, but I think my recommendation would be either going through and asking for reopening the RFP, asking for more respondents, or even pointedly asking certain, certain software providers where we already use some of the modules of those software providers, but we know they have others. We could ask to see what their offerings are. In reality, it boils down to this. No matter what we get, whether it's Granicus, or a custom website, or something from someone else, if we don't do process reengineering, we won't see the benefits of it. So we will see some of the same issues, but we'll have new, more frustrating screens, because no one will understand the new frustrating screens. So part of this is all about making sure we not only pick the right solution, but also pick the right, make the right efforts to do process reengineering, so that we can really take advantage of the new system. And I would argue that standing still and not doing anything, just using board docs as it is, is probably the least desirable from anybody's position. I can't imagine that's the way anybody wants to go at this point, but it is certainly a viable option if we want to go that route. So that was kind of me walking through everything, open for questions. It's kind of a lot to take in.
Great. Counselor Barlow.
Thank you, President Paul, and thanks for that update.
Yep.
It's a little disappointing, though, you know.
Only get two respondents?
Yeah.
Totally disappointing.
I want to comment, first off, I saw Superintendent Flanagan here. The district uses board docs as well, so we should probably collaborate with them a little bit and see if they've done any.
I'm happy to.
But then also a couple of questions. The cost of Granicus, is it expensive, and is it configurable, what little you know about it anyways?
It's, it's very configurable. It would definitely handle what, what we need from a city council perspective. My gut would tell me it would probably handle what you're looking for as well, if we wanted to collaborate that direction. It definitely manages boards and commissions very well. It also has a community engagement piece, and it has a focus-built municipal website capability, which is important, because we have some of the same issues on our website as we do with board docs in terms of responsive design and accessibility. So we could do all of those. It is not an inexpensive solution. I want to say we spend between $10,000 and $15,000 a year on board docs, and I want to say the first year for the implementation to say the first year for the implementation, buying everything, is somewhere close to 100 with Granicus and maybe 50, 50 to 60 a year going forward. But we would be replacing several systems with that, including potentially the website.
Thanks. And can you talk a little bit about the process engineering need, reengineering needed that you mentioned?
Sure. I think it's, that's a little bit of an effort to dig into how is it, how is it that we can leverage the new system? So understanding exactly what we do to go, what goes into building an agenda, managing the minutes, all those pieces, understanding what, what is working very well and what the friction points are, and then designing a process around fixing those, resolving those friction points. And using a system like Granicus, Board Docs, Civic Plus, any of them, will, it will allow us to kind of leverage some of that technology if we better understood where the friction points are in our process and how we want to get around them.
Thanks.
Yep.
Thank you, Counselor Barlow. Are there other counselors who have questions? Counselor Shannon, who certainly should be credited as, when she was council president, who brought us board docs.
Nice.
And before that, we had.
Dark ages.
We had stacks and stacks of paper that were delivered to our homes.
I promise we don't want to go that direction.
Yeah. I think, I think we can all agree there. I, I just wondered if, you know, the board doc system has remained the same for us all of these years. Are there upgrades through that company that can meet our needs? That price differential is, is pretty big, and I'm a little bit unclear why board docs doesn't work for commissions.
I think part of the reason board docs might not work for commissions is maybe partly the process engineering. We may need to dig in and try to leverage the system differently or better for boards and commissions. I do know that what, one of the main differences between the pricing is that we've only chosen to use one piece of board docs, and that price for Granicus was really for the entire suite of things they offer. If we were to start cutting things out and only using certain pieces, it would be a considerably different price at that point, I believe. And I think, you know, in terms of how we could leverage either one of them going forward, I do think that there are new releases for board docs. They did not respond to the RFP either. I wish they had even responded. It's one of the ones we could go after and say, hey, we'd like to figure out and talk to you about what you do have.
Well, I don't think that we should, particularly if you feel like there's something else out there, if there may be something more competitive, both, either something better or something more competitive, and the least painful thing may be if board docs has something that meets our needs better. We actually got the system, the school started using the system before, before we did. So we adopted what they were already using.
Right.
And having, yeah, fewer, the fewer sys, the fewer different systems, the better, I think. But I would certainly be open to, you know, soliciting bids from other companies that can provide the service for us.
Yeah, I think that's a great response. I think if we could go and ask board docs and ask a couple of the other companies that we do use modules from today, I think it might give us a better view of what, what's out there. Absolutely.
Thank you, Counselor Shannon. Counselor Hanson.
Thanks, yeah. I would agree that we should reopen the RFP and keep looking, and this is a, you know, this decision will probably last for years down the road, and we want to find a website that's easy to use, not just for folks in the city, but for the entire general public. So I think we should open it up and, you know, get, get more options on the table and more prices on the table. So I would support that. But thanks so much for your work on this and for giving us the update.
You bet.
Thank you, Counselor Hanson. I don't see any other counselors with questions. Oh, Counselor Travers.
Sorry, just briefly, agreed. Thank you for the presentation. Agreed with Counselor Hanson's point that I think we should open the RFP process as you suggested, and if there's any particular programs that you've identified, I would also suggest are reaching out to them, perhaps more pointedly, to invite them to respond to the RFP. And just the only other piece on my end is, in reaching out to these companies, I don't know if you have already, but if they have a, a testing platform or some opportunity for us to hop in there to see how it operates versus board docs, or even if we're aware of other municipalities that rely on these programs, if counselors could have an opportunity to work within it and understand how it works, I think that would be helpful before we're asked to fully move forward with any platform that, that we want to go with. So thanks.
Absolutely. Yeah, we can make that happen. We definitely, for Granicus, we can pass along some municipalities that we know are using it, and as we open it up, we can look at more as well.
That'd be great.
Yep.
Thanks.
Thank you, Counselor Travers. I agree with that. That would be incredibly helpful if we could take a look at that. Were there other counselors who had questions? And also, are there any counselors who don't? It, it appears as though the broad consensus is to continue the search. Is there anyone who feels otherwise? If not, I think you, I hope, oh, Counselor Jiang.
Yeah, I think the sentiment of having board doc to upgrade what we're looking for, to make it more accessible, I think it should not be rooted out. Yeah, I think, you understand.
Oh, absolutely. Totally agree.
Thank you.
Yes, we don't need to reinvent the wheel if we have a, a wheel that just needs a little help.
Right. And with the, an upgrade, if, if board docs offers any upgrades and a process reengineering effort, we may get as much benefit out of that as anything else. So absolutely a great idea.
Do you feel like that's enough direction from us?
I think so. Yep, I think I'm good. I'll keep you posted.
Well, that's great. Thank you.
I guess the one question I do have, just to make sure, we are not, in, in, from, from our perspective, we're not up against a date from a licensing or contract. Are there any, are we up against any dates from your perspective, deadlines, or is it just a matter of let's make sure we get the right one?
No, I mean, I think the, I think when we had the council retreat in May, one of the things that did come up was the fact that we felt, you know, board docs, as Counselor Shannon said, I mean, when we started with board docs, I don't think it's any different now than it was when we started with board docs. It was a huge leap forward for the council, but in terms of the actual system that we're using, it's effectively the same, and it's done in a piecemeal approach, as you've mentioned. And that was, I think that's probably one of the, the biggest challenges, is that people just don't know where to look for information. It may, it's very, if it's confusing for us, then it certainly is confusing for people who really don't understand the system.
Right.
As we do.
Correct. Okay, great. Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you so much for your work on this. We'll look forward to hearing, hopefully we'll get more responses and even if it takes a little more proactive work.
We'll, we'll pull some responses out of people.
Okay. Thank you so much. With that, we'll close item 3.01. We've completed the public forum, which moves us on to pub, item five, which is climate emergency reports. Is there any counselor or the administration who wishes to offer a climate emergency report? Mayor Weinberger.
Thank you, President Paul. There are actually two notable updates I wanted to share with the council and the public. One is that in, on your consent agenda tonight, we talked about it at the Board of Finance, we are making a airport purchase of a electric sweeper, which will help maintain the facilities at, at the airport. I highlight this just because I think this is a really promising, exciting direction, that we're now starting to see this sort of large piece of equipment that we use for maintaining the city is, is, is starting to switch over from being fossil fuel burning to electric. And this, Nick Longo, our acting aviation director, I said, to me, the only else in the fleet we had like it was our electric Zamboni out at the Letty Arena, and turns out that it's a pretty similar piece of equipment. But so just as the council knows, we are looking to electrify everything we can when we are making fleet purchases, and here's an example of a kind of new innovation and progress there. The other update, one that is quite exciting and ultimately I think more impactful, is that the Burlington Electric Department is moving forward with plans and seeking a public service board approval for a, basically taking advantage of a new tariff that will allow low and moderate income users, customers to receive different electric rates and, and to use on-bill financing for certain electric upgrades. And this is, you know, one, I think, appropriate criticism of the move towards net zero and electrification is that the benefits and the, of, of this direction are, up until this point, they, you know, it's been a real challenge finding ways for those benefits to flow to customers who are low and moderate income customers. BD has worked very hard on this and made some real progress. This is a substantial new policy change that should open some real additional possibilities. As soon as this receives public service board approval, we will be, you know, very, there'll be a lot of communications about how people take advantage of this, and that's still a little ways off, but we're, we're making progress towards that.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Weinberger. Are there counselors who have a climate emergency report? Seeing none, we'll close that item and continue with item six, which is our consent agenda. Is there a motion to move our consent agenda and take the actions indicated?
So moved.
Thank you, Counselor McGee, seconded by Counselor Jiang. Is there any discussion on the motion to move our consent agenda? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say no. We have approved our consent agenda, which moves us on to item seven, which is the deliberative agenda. We have a number of items on our deliberative agenda. In the interest of time and being able to accomplish everything on our agenda and adjourn within our rules, there are minutes allotted to the agenda items, which we approved when we approved our agenda. As per our council rules, I will do my best to see that we adhere to our approved agenda. And with that, the first item is 7.01, which is a public hearing on two proposed ordinance changes. The first is regarding ZA 22-07, which is maximum parking and transportation demand management. And then the second is ZA 22-08 on short-term rentals. The way that public hearings work is that you may sign up to speak either in person or online. We will open the public forum, and those who wish to speak, even if you haven't, even if you haven't filled out a form, you're certainly welcome to just simply raise your hand, and we will have you speak. Or if you're online, you can use the raise hand function as well. We will then close the public hearing after all those who have wanted to speak have spoken, and move on to further business with these two items. So with that, we'll open the public hearing, and if there are people who wish to speak to either item, please raise your hand or, as well, online, use the raise hand function. And Erin, if you could just let us know if there is anyone who has used the raise hand Is that, is that to indicate that there is no one who has used the raise hand function online?
Thank you. I just want a clarification about this process. If there are amendments to this ordinance, I know there are some cases where we can't make a change unless it's based on public comment. And so I wondered if there was a desire to make an amendment, does it require warning another public hearing in the future on this? Or so, just, I think you understand where I'm going.
I, I think I understand where you are going. My understanding is that yes, in fact, there, there is, but I can defer that to our parliamentarian who may have an opinion on that as well.
Yeah, I'm not sure if I'm prepared to address that in the abstract. Is there, what specifically are you contemplating here?
I'm not contemplating anything in particular, actually. I just, I just thought that there might be some potential amendments to this and wanted to clarify what the, what the process would be for amending this. Looks like Director Tuttle may have some, I don't know.
If it's okay, I could weigh in. This question was asked of Attorney Sturdavant earlier today, and she shared a section of state statute that, oh, she's here. I'll let her address this question, sorry.
City Attorney, Acting City Attorney Sturdavant, please.
Good evening. So with zoning ordinances, it depends actually what the changes are, what level of process is required. The statute, which is 24 VSA 4442B, talks about that the legislative body may make minor changes to the proposed bylaw amendment or repeal. They should not do so less than 14 days prior to the final public hearing. If they make, the legislative body at any time makes substantial changes in concept meaning or extent of the proposed bylaw, it shall warrant a new public hearing. And if there's changes, legislative body at least 10 days prior to the hearing shall file a copy of the changes with the clerk. And there's a little bit more to that, but we can, I can certainly share that depending on the outcome of this process.
Okay, thank you. Thanks so much. With regard to the public hearing, there are, it does not appear as though there's anyone who has raised their hand to speak remotely, nor are there persons in contois. With that, we will close the public hearing and move on to item 7.02, which is the CDO parking, minimum and maximum parking requirements and transportation demand, which is ZA-22-07. This is for a fourth reading. And with that, I'll go to the Chair of the Ordinance Committee, which is Counselor Travers, for a motion.
Thank you, President Paul. I've moved to postpone this item until our meeting on October 17th, 2022, and would ask for the floor back upon a second.
Thank you, Counselor, thank you, Counselor Travers. There is a second to that motion from Counselor Hightower. You have the floor back.
Thank you, President Paul. This item with respect to minimum-maximum parking requirements as well as transportation demand management has been making its way through the Ordinance Committee and Planning Commission well before I joined this council, and has had quite a bit of public input. We've received, as of late, though, some further feedback, particularly from the affordable housing community with respect to this proposed ordinance's impact on their operations. And the intent behind this further postponement is to meet with partners in the affordable housing community to, to fully hear and understand their concerns and take them into consideration before ultimately moving on this. So that is the purpose of the motion and is why I will be supporting it. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Travers. This motion to postpone is debatable, so if there are other counselors who wish to offer any comments, now would be the time. Counselor Hanson.
Great, thanks. And thanks to Counselor Travers for doing really a lot of legwork on this. And thanks to Counselor Travers for doing really a lot of legwork on this policy, not only the policy itself, but engaging with different stakeholders. I will vote yes on postponement, although I don't, it's not what I think we should be doing, but, you know, I want this policy to pass. I think it's critical, and I think postponing probably gives us a better chance of getting the strongest possible version of this policy adopted. But I, I just wanted to voice my concern, which I've voiced many times, which is that on the issue of transportation, I feel that as a city, we continue to really drag our feet, and we're moving very slowly on changing a system that we need to change really rapidly in order to address the climate crisis, as well as the other co-benefits of shifting our transportation system, making it safer, more accessible, more affordable. So, yeah, I'll support the postponement, but I think we need to, from a process perspective and from a policy's perspective, I think we really need to change how we're addressing this issue of transportation. And we need to be moving more quickly on policy, and we need to have processes that enable us to move more quickly if we're really going to make the shift that I think many of us agree is necessary. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Hanson. Again, this is on the motion to postpone. Are there any other councilors who wish to offer comments? Seeing none, we have a...
Sorry, my hand's up.
I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry, Counselor House, we can't see you, so I didn't realize.
I'm sorry.
My apologies. I'm not really sure why you're not showing on the screen, but by all means, please go ahead.
No worries at all. Thank you, President Paul. Yeah, I just, I wanted to say I'm in favor of the postponement, and I certainly agree that we do need to make decisions about this rapidly. You know, the, the climate crisis is not going to wait. However, I also don't think that we should build the climate justice movement on the backs of, you know, the most, the folks who are most marginalized in our city. And that includes the affordable housing community, so I'm glad that we're doing our due diligence on this. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor House. Are there other councilors who wish to offer any comments on the motion to postpone? Seeing none, we have a motion to postpone with a second. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Any opposed, please say no. That motion passes unanimously, and that item will be, will come back to us in October, on October 17th. Is that correct? Yes.
Correct.
Yes, so it won't be at our next meeting, but the meeting after that, the first meeting in October. Thank you, Counselor Travers, and to all for your work on this, as well as Director Tuttle. That will move us on to item 7.04, or 7.03, which is an ordinance, the Comprehensive Development Ordinance on Short-Term Rentals, which is ZA-22-08. And this is for a third reading. I will go to Counselor Travers for a motion.
Thank you, President Paul. I'd moved to waive the third reading and adopt the ordinance as amended by the Planning Commission, and upon a second, would ask for Director Tuttle to provide us a report.
Thank you. Motion has been made and seconded by Counselor Hightower. Thank you. We will go to Director Tuttle, and certainly if you could let us know if there have been any changes, and if so, what they were, or when it went to the Planning Commission, that would be helpful. Thank you, and thanks for being here.
Of course. This amendment is a complement to the changes you adopted earlier this year to implement the short-term rental framework in Burlington. This is to adopt the zoning pieces of that framework, which is pretty straightforward compared to the policy that you enacted earlier this year through the Minimum Housing Code. This simply provides a definition for a short-term rental in the city's zoning ordinance, provides some clarifications to definitions for other lodging types, and indicates that short-term rentals are permitted in the city wherever residential uses are provided. It then makes reference to the specific standards and limitations for where short-term rentals can operate and how, that are contained in Chapter 18, which you've already adopted. The only change that was made as this went through the Planning Commission process was a simple technical correction to the document that is called Article 14 Plan BTV Downtown Code. This is a section of the use table that applies to the two form districts in the downtown core. Previously, there was a reference to a section of our ordinance that, where we were going to put all of the short-term rental details in our ordinance, but since we moved it to Article 18, it was no longer relevant, so we just cleaned that up. Otherwise, this is exactly as it was referred to you earlier this year.
Great. Thank you very much for that, that update. Are there any questions or comments from the council? Counselor Bergman?
As I indicated previously, I'm not a big fan of short-term rentals. I ended up supporting that, of Chapter 18, and I voted to refer this, and I am inclined, absent hearing something shocking, to support this as well. But I do want the administration to provide a report to this council about the numbers of people who have registered their units and the locations of those units. I'd like to understand the same with regard to what is now called lodgings, so that we can get a sense of that, and get the other information, like the, the tax revenues that have been raised. So we made some serious changes. People said it's going to be the best thing since sliced bread, and I want to see the loaf.
I can relay that...
Thank you, thank you, Counselor Bergman. Yes, please.
Sorry, President Paul.
No worries.
I can relay that request as well to DPI. As of the adoption of the Article 18 ordinance and the warning of this amendment for public hearing, the changes that you all adopted have been in effect since August 3rd. And I know that DPI has been working incredibly hard to get set up with Granicus, who is helping us with enforcement, and kind of moving through the process of getting everybody set up with the licenses that they are required to have. So I can share that with them, and we can talk about what would be the right point in time for bringing that report back.
Just to be clear, I would like that sooner than later, and I see this as being something that we want to visit periodically during the course of the year, not just a one snap in time. The housing crisis is outrageous, and the amount of money that people are paying is sickening, and I want to make sure that what I have supported is not making that worse. I'm not sure that I made the right choice, so I would like the data to help me. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Han, sorry, Counselor Bergman. We'll go to Counselor Shannon.
Thank you, President Paul. While I, I agree really with everything that Counselor Bergman said, this is really just aligning the zoning ordinance with the, what was adopted in Chapter 18, and it's a bit of a quandary. When I don't agree with what was adopted in Chapter 18, what do I do with the changes to the zoning ordinance that help that make sense? I think that it's actually taking this out of zoning that I find most objectionable. At a baseline, I disagree with the council's action to make it easier to, to get a short-term rental. True, because we were not enforcing our regulations, people were creating short-term rentals illegally, and it became kind of a rampant pattern in the city, but it was not legal. And what we've done is made it easier by law to establish short-term rentals. And by taking it out of the zoning ordinance, we've removed the public process that we have always had on, you know, when you created any kind of bed and breakfast, it was always required that you went through a zoning, zoning process, and now it's only requiring a registration process, which I object to. So while it is a quandary, I am going to vote no, because I think it's important to voice my disagreement with this policy, and, and that's the way I'm going to choose to do that tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Shannon. Are there other councilors who wish to offer comments on this ordinance before we go to a vote? Oh, yes, I'm sorry. Counselor Travers.
Thank you, President Paul. I believe this council, for the most part, has had a number of opportunities to debate the issue of, of short-term rentals, and I'm very pleased with where we landed. In June, I agree with Counselor Bergman, that I would similarly like to see a report, because until we have that report, the feedback we'll receive is merely anecdotal. But what I can say is that anecdotally, what I've been hearing is that folks, particularly in those buildings that we were most concerned about, which are non-owner occupied residential dwellings that are being converted into short-term rentals, anecdotally, I've been hearing that folks have gotten the message that no longer is that going to be permitted here in Burlington. So I, I do not agree that with the actions we took earlier in the summer, that we've made it easier in Burlington to operate a short-term rental. I think our ordinances and zoning regulations as they were, were not adapted yet, or adopted yet, to comply with this relatively new lodging in, in short-term rentals that we see on Airbnbs and VRBO. And I think we've taken steps to, we kept saying before that we were trying to fit a square peg into a round hole with respect to short-term rentals, and I think we've brought a lot of clarity to the matter. But do agree with Counselor Bergman. I will look forward to seeing where we're at sooner than later, once we have that information in hand. Thanks. And I will be voting in support of this, because I do understand and believe that is simply bringing our zoning ordinances into compliance with the actions we took earlier in the summer.
Thank you, Counselor Travers. Are there other councilors? We have a motion to waive the third reading and adopt the ordinance as amended by the Planning Commission. Seeing no other comments from the council, we will go to a vote. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say no.
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 Okay, there, that would be Counselor House, Counselor Hanson, and Counselor Shannon, who have indicated a no vote. And I don't believe that Counselor Freeman is online, so that would mean 11, so that is...
I'm here, Counselor Paul.
Oh, I'm so, I'm so...
No, I think my device just didn't unmute. I apologize. I was a yes.
You're a yes. Okay.
Yeah, sorry about that.
Thanks for clarifying, and I'm glad to have you here. That would mean that we are an eight, nine to, nine to three vote, so the motion passes. We will move on to item 7.04, which is a presentation in response to a resolution that we passed at our last meeting regarding the creation of an additional seven ward redistricting map. And for this presentation, we have Director Tuttle with us, who is joined by Nancy Stetson, the senior, our senior policy and data analyst. My understanding is that you will be presenting this alternative map and a plan that you've developed with next steps in this process to get us to a charter change coming in March, which seems like a long time from now, but really isn't that far when you start going through the dates, the, the benchmark dates. So thank you both for being here, and we're, we'll look forward to your presentation.
All right, great. Are you all set to share? Nancy is actually going to walk us through a brief presentation to share with you the map, the seven-by-12 councilor's map that was posted on board docs, as well as some information about next steps.
Great. Thank you.
It says host disabled. We're just going to screen sharing. Oh, okay, great. Thanks. So I wanted to start with just reminding everybody in the public that you can find more information about redistricting on the city website, including interactive maps, where you can zoom in to your part of the city and see how you might be affected. But we're here today to bring you this map that you requested in August. The request was that, it was a seven ward map with five wards with two members, two wards with one member, and in, in, with the goal of keeping the New North End and the Old North End distinct. So I'm going to show the map, and then I have a couple more slides, but this should be brief. So this, ooh, the colors do not show up so well there, but... This map is, is what I drew. I see this as, as a draft map to sort of get us closer to what we're looking for. The overall plan deviation is 9.7%, which is very close to the threshold, but just barely under it. The main changes that this map makes to, compared to previous maps, is with these two smaller wards, so Ward Seven becomes a third of the New North End, and then Ward Three becomes a sort of downtown ward that, again, elects only one counselor. The other, the other thing these, this map does is it tries to preserve the polling places for the wards. This particularly pertains to the South End, where Edmonds remains part of Ward Six, and the block that has Bob and Mill and the Barge Canal and B D is split in two, so that B D can stay the polling place for Ward Five, but Bob and Mill can join the King Maple Neighborhood in Ward Three. This is the map, I guess I should run through the slides before questions. The other thing I looked at for, for this meeting was on the student population. There's concerns about how the students will be divided across the wards. So we only have data on where on-campus students live, but citywide, there are about 6,000 students. They are really, you can see here, they are concentrated on the UVM, Athletic, and Redstone campuses, south of Main Street on the top of the hill. That's where nearly 4,000 students live, so that is the area that we have to grapple with. I also looked at how these students make up parts of wards, depending on which plan we choose. So you can see in the current ward configuration, two-thirds of Ward Eight residents are on-campus students. These students are moved to Ward Six in some of these other plans, and so in the map I just presented, 60% of Ward Six residents would be these on-campus students. The one thing I, I do just want to note, that this does not account for off-campus students, and off-campus students are concentrated in certain neighborhoods, and so this doesn't show the full picture of, of where student populations are. Finally, we have a draft schedule, there, I guess the, the final schedule for when these maps need to be approved hasn't, isn't set yet, but we expect it's going to be by December at some point. So working back from that, our hope is that we can come up with a final map, or a couple final maps for the October 17th meeting, and work towards that goal with the rest of the September, in, in time to send it to charter change and have it approved in December.
And I think with that, we're happy to entertain any questions or comments that you have about this additional map that was requested. And, you know, we're happy to work with a couple of councilors moving forward from tonight to help refine either this map or any other maps to help us meet the objective of having something for referral in October.
Thank you. Thank you both for, for this presentation. We'll go to, we'll go to the council now. Counselor... Counselor Barlow, please.
Thank you, President Paul. I thank you for that presentation and for that additional map that you've made for us all. I'd like to move the council approve a work session during September with Nancy Stetson in a small group, including counselors Hightower, McGee, Travers, and myself, to discuss and revise the maps that have been presented to the council so far.
So, thank you. That's a motion. Is there a second to that motion? Seconded by Counselor Hightower. Is there any discussion on that motion to refer this to a smaller working group who will work with Nancy Stetson on bringing us something back on October 17th? Counselor Hightower. And then we'll go to Counselor Jiang.
Not going to lie, I wasn't expecting that motion, but I'm glad to have my name in it. Or probably texting me, and I just didn't see it. I do -- I am curious as to what folks think more generally about this map. I do want to just point to Robert Burstow-Johnson's comments and the comments about if we did work on this map, that that means potentially having elections every year for some wards and every other year for other wards. I wonder how folks feel about having elections every other year for all of the wards, which I think is an interesting option, especially with us considering or implementing ranked choice voting for counselors. So just throwing that out there as a part of a larger discussion. But I'm also fine with moving this to a working group.
All right. Thank you, Counselor Hightower. If there are counselors who wish to offer an opinion, they can certainly do so. In the meantime, we will go to Counselor Jiang.
Thank you, President Paul. And I don't know which one I need to respond to, the motion or what I think about the map.
Well, we have a -- a motion came to us right off the bat. So we are talking about the motion. After that, we certainly -- you certainly could, if you wish. We'll try to stay within the item that's in front of us.
Absolutely. Thank you. And whatever I say here, if I basically -- my intention is basically to just raise here that being an independent elected official is not easy. But I want to recognize the work that you have done here. It's beautiful. Thank you so much. And this has not been -- this did not start today. You've been around. I'm pretty sure maybe a baby can be born. This process is not even done yet, you know? So what -- I just wanted to understand the names of the people that were picked to be in this small -- how the decision of bringing those people forward came through? Are they all in the same committee, working together? Or is it a specific committee that will be working on it? And if not, how did you decide on picking a couple of people to work on this?
Counselor, we'll just go for an answer to Counselor Barlow, and then if you want the floor back, Counselor Jiang, of course.
Sure. And thanks for that question. I don't know, it was probably back in ju -- like, probably early July, maybe. Some of us had been talking about redistricting, and the four of us had met because we represented geographically sort of the different areas of the city, and then politically, we also had a diversity there as well. And some of the objectives that were more important to certain groups, and some of the concerns groups had, were sort of well encapsulated within the four of us. So we thought that streamlined group then could work to try to arrive at some consensus, or at least try to forge a consensus position that the council could support. And so we've been continuing -- we've met a couple of times since the initial redistricting discussions, but this map came out of one of those discussions. So my thinking was, since this group had been sort of steeped in a lot of the minutia of redistricting, that it would be a logical group to continue to try to do this last refinement on the maps that have been presented to the council so far.
Counselor Jiang? Thank you, Counselor Barlow.
Thank you. I definitely will not be voting forward for the motion in front of us. Yeah. Because I do believe that it is not at the discretion of some city councils to make this decision, but at least the president of the council, based on people's interests, can appoint people, if they are interested, to be in that committee. But not at the discretion of some city councils. I'll be voting no. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Jiang. Counselor Shannon?
Thank you, President Paul. I think sometimes we do appoint -- the council itself appoints a committee, and one has been offered. I don't object to Counselor Jiang's idea that the council president could appoint the committee, but I also appreciate that some counselors have taken the initiative to try and find consensus. I actually really welcome that, and I'd like to thank those counselors for doing that. So it does make sense to me to proceed with those same counselors unless the council president had some objection to that. So I will support that.
Thank you, Counselor Shannon. Any other comments from any other counselors before we would go to a vote on the motion? Yes. Counselor House, you have your hand up. Yes?
Yes, sorry. My mic was not unmuting.
That's okay.
Thank you, President Paul. Yeah, I think just when it comes to this issue in general, I just want to say I am still in favor of the eight-ward, two-rep map. I think I've made that very clear. But I've heard from a lot of my constituents, especially those who, you know, will end up in Ward 3, that they have some real concerns about only having one representative, whereas folks in other districts will have two. And I also see that as a concern. I think that even if we put elections on every other year across the board, you know, they have a great point, which is that they would only have one representative to contact as opposed to two. So I think it's really important just to keep that in mind for the folks in the ward that would only have one representative.
Thank you, Counselor House. Any other comments from the council? Counselor Carpenter?
First off, I want to thank the councils that have worked on this, and I totally support this resolution. We have a month left. We've got to narrow our decision points, and we can't have 12 of us doing it. To be blunt, I shudder to think if there were 16 of us trying to do this, which is my concern about the 8-16 map. So that's an editorial comment, and just an editorial comment on the 7-12. It has a wee bit of awkwardness, but I live in a legislative district with one state legislator who serves me well, and she's quite capable of serving me well. She's smart and bright enough that she can serve me alone. I don't have to have two. And in fact, she serves people in the Old North End and in the New North End, and does it very well. So I don't think we have to say it can't work, because it at least works in that case. Thanks.
Thank you, Counselor Carpenter. Any other comments from the council before we go to a vote? We have a motion that has been seconded. All those in favor?
I have my hand up.
Oh, I'm sorry, Counselor Hanson. You're in size tiny, and I can't necessarily see. Now you're in size bigger. So please, go ahead.
All right. So should we wait to give -- it seems like folks are offering some comments more generally about the math and redistricting. Should I do that now, or wait until after this vote?
Well, we sort of have started that, so if you have any comments, by all means, go ahead.
Okay. Yeah, I would just say, you know, my preference has always been smaller wards, and whether it's 12, 14, 10, whatever, but individual, single-member, single-ward. Or secondary to that is the 8-2 potential. But I think from a compromise perspective, I think this is -- this map that we're seeing here today is the best path forward that I've seen, to find a compromise that satisfies a lot of the different concerns and desires that I've heard from counselors. So, you know, with the interest of not being stuck in our current system, which I think is much worse than what's being proposed, as we've talked about, we are running a little bit short on time. So in my mind, this is our best way forward to date, unless other folks change their opinion on things, or we come up with more creative solutions. So I'm supportive of it, and I'm supportive of this motion to have some counselors, you know, dig in deeper before we look at it again in October. Thanks.
Great. Thank you, Counselor Hanson. I don't see a Counselor Shannon, and then Counselor Travers. And then we'll try to get to a vote.
Is it okay to comment on the map itself?
It is okay to comment on the map itself.
So if this does go to committee, I just wanted to point out one thing that I noticed in this, which is it does create a downtown district that a lot of people had wanted. But the way the lines are drawn, the, for example, Main Street, one side of Main Street would be in Ward 3, and the other side of Main Street would be in Ward 5. And I would think that people on Main Street in particular would want to be part of that downtown ward. And it looks a little bit gerrymandered. I don't think it was gerrymandered in the sense that, you know, there was some intention to do something in particular, include some group. I can kind of understand why the piece of Ward 5, current Ward 5, was taken. But I think it might be preferable to see if Main Street could be included in that downtown -- both sides of Main Street included in that downtown ward, and it may come down to the challenges of census blocks. You know, I understand that we -- it's not always easy to do exactly what we wanted to do, but just wanted to throw that out there for the committee to look at. Thanks.
Thank you, Counselor Shannon. Counselor Travers?
Thank you, President Paul. First of all, thank you to Counselor Barlow for including me as a part of this committee. And I look forward, if that were to happen, to continuing to work with you and Counselor Hightower and Counselor McGee in building a consensus, not only amongst ourselves, not only for this council, but on a map that we feel voters will ultimately support in March. Since we are talking about the maps, among those we've seen, and this is no fault of Director Tuttle or Nancy Stetson, you know, none of the maps are perfect, right? If we had a perfect map, we wouldn't still be here at this point in time. All the maps that we've seen have pros, but they also have cons. And so I will look forward to our fully hashing those out. I will just say one item here, and this is an item that applies to pretty much every map we've seen, which is that one of the top concerns that we've heard all throughout this, including dating back to before and through the ad hoc redistricting process, is that folks are very concerned with the existing makeup of Ward 8 and the vast majority student population within that ward. And in interest, there seemed to have been a general consensus behind an interest in more evenly distributing the student population across wards. And one of the concerns that I saw in the presentation that we just saw here is whether it be a seven-ward map, or whether it be an eight-ward map, that we seem to be, for the most part, simply moving an existing problem into potentially another ward. We see, I think, I don't have it up in front of me right now, but I think the existing student population in Ward 8 is 66%. With the seven-ward, 12-counselor map, in Ward 6, the student population would be 60%. With one of the eight-ward options we've seen, it's 67%. And I get why that's happening, right? I suspect that one of the biggest hurdles that you've found here is that we've been measuring these maps based on census blocks. And for the most part, we don't have census blocks of populations over 1,000 individuals. The one exception to that is the census blocks that contain the university dormitories. And when you add that block to one ward or another, suddenly the population of that ward increases by 1,000, 2,000-plus individuals, and we end up with this situation where we're out of sorts with what we're required to do with respect to even populations. So I don't expect an answer necessarily now, but in proceeding from here, one of the things I would be very interested in further exploring is the extent to which, in the interest, which again, there appears to be common consensus behind this, in more evenly distributing the student population, whether or not in that interest, we can break the census blocks that contain student dormitories. And to that end, I think it will be important for us to not only know what the population of students is on a particular campus. We've had the Athletic Campus and the Redstone Campus, but we're really going to need to know what the populations are in individual dormitories to decide the extent to which we can fairly and more evenly distribute those census blocks. So if we are to move with this committee, that is something that I would be interested in taking a look at, is first of all, what is the city's position on whether or not we can break the census blocks, given how those census blocks are completely different than the other census blocks you see throughout the rest of the city? And then, second, if the city is open to that, whether or not we can get information, further information from the universities as to the population or general population of the individual dormitories. Thanks.
I can't answer that. We do have data by dorm, or the UVM dorms. So, and from what I understand, it would be possible to split those blocks. The only thing I would just say is that that block, while it's also -- while it's a large block, it's also the densest block in the city, and that there are just a lot of students that live up there, and that they will have to go in -- even if we split them in half, that would end up making two wards have a lot of students in them. So they will just have to be put somewhere.
Thank you, and thank you, Counselor Travers. I don't know if Counselor Hanson and Counselor House have their hand up again, or if that was from a prior request to speak.
It was again. We put them back up.
Okay. All right. Counselor Hanson, to be followed by Counselor House.
Great, thanks. I just, I wanted to respond to Counselor Travers because I think we, I mean, yeah, first of all, there's no getting around that we're a college town, and there's going to be super student-heavy districts or wards. But I think a lot of the concern with Ward 8 is that it specifically gerrymanders on-campus with off-campus student housing. And the percentages on the screen, I think, we're just showing on-campus students, right?
That's correct.
I can't really see the -- yeah. So I think what Counselor Travers said about this shift, I actually don't think is true that -- I think it is actually a substantial shift, because it's less on-campus students in the new Ward 6 than the current Ward 8. But it's also way less off-campus students, because it's not combining a neighborhood that's almost all students in with dorms. It's combining a neighborhood that's mostly non-students in with dorms. So I think the overall mix is much more balanced in this new map than what we currently have. Thanks.
Thank you, Counselor Hanson. We'll go to Counselor House, and then if we could maybe get to a vote. Counselor House, please.
Yeah, I do agree with Counselor Hanson's point. I think sometimes it feels like we, as a council, kind of play hot potato with the student population, but specifically the dorms, just because of how difficult it is to campaign there, giving the university's policies, that kind of stuff. But I think it also opens up this greater dialogue of the fact that UVM restricts students' access to information about their local government that every other person who lives in our city is afforded. I don't believe there are very many other places in our city where we can Um, I don't believe there are very many other places in our city where we can't, um, go door-to-door and campaign. And I think it, you know, I, I, I think that students are smart. I think they, um, would love to hear, um, sort of all opinions, um, from around our city. And I, I think that it also, um, kind of begs the question of what can we do, um, as a council, you know, to potentially work with the university to kind of, um, change that? Because I think that an engaged, um, student population is going to be a population, um, that cares about taking care of our city versus right now, maybe they don't have access to, um, the knowledge or the information that they need, um, to really understand how our city functions and take care of it.
Thank you. Thanks, Counselor House. There was one item that I did want to ask, uh, because we do have Acting City Attorney, Kim Sturdivant, who's still on Zoom with us. The motion that was made is to approve a work session, and this is not with a committee. This is a small group of counselors as opposed to a committee. Um, and I'm hoping, um, Attorney Sturdivant, that you could respond to, um, it was your opinion that, uh, because this is not the formation of a formal committee, that we did not need to go through any more of a process than just simply a motion? Um, and if you could also speak to whether or not, uh, that this smaller working group would need to be publicly warned and how that would, how you would encourage us to move forward with that work session with Nancy and the four city councilors, should this be approved?
Um, certainly. So I looked at it a little bit earlier, um, this afternoon, so didn't have a full review of it, but, um, basically based on that review of, um, looking at an informal work sessions and not setting up a committee, um, but I also have heard that term being used a number of times by counselors. So I think that you should be clear of what you're trying to set up. Um, and then, yes, I think, you know, in, in, and then suggesting the, the working committee is, um, was the way that the, the motion was stated. So I believe that's fine.
So, so the, the question that I have is, is that I, I, I hear what you're saying, and I did get that emailed from you earlier. Um, because there are four counselors, it's not a majority of the council, but there are four who will be working on this, is this, um, is the protocol that they should use going forward with this work session to be warning this as a public meeting and to have a public forum at that meeting?
So I will certainly look at it closer before they start having their next meeting, but initially as informal working group, um, I, I don't believe so, but I will follow up with the staff to make sure that that occurs correctly.
Okay. Um, I think that is a concern and it, it certainly is something that others have voiced to me during the day, uh, today. So would want to make sure that we do, we do this correctly and give the public, as well as other counselors, if they wish to be there, the opportunity. So I'm, I'm a little bit concerned about that. Um, uh, do you want to go to a vote? But I know that Counselor Bergman wants to, um, wants to speak. Please go ahead and then hopefully we can go to a vote.
Sure. Uh, two things. I would like some clarification again on the members of this so-called, um, small working group. And, uh, the second thing is I don't think there is any doubt that this is a body of the, uh, of the council, no matter what you call it, no matter what artful language you use, and therefore it is subject to the open meeting law. And I think it was, it is just suicidal to hold a redistricting, um, meeting not in public. I, insanity is another word that comes to my mind. So I, I think that even if you got a, um, an opinion from an attorney that said that you didn't have to do it, uh, I, if I were on that committee, I wouldn't touch that with a 10-foot pole and I would tell you right now, I would think that it's a terrible, terrible idea and I would say so again and again and again. So you take that for what it's worth. But the, um, the, the recitation of the, um, members of the, this so-called group, non-group.
Are you looking for the names?
I am.
Okay. Well, uh, as, as put in the motion, it was Counselors Barlow, uh, Travers, Hightower, and McGee. Thank you. And, uh, I, I think I, I, for what it's worth, I, I do tend to agree with Counselor Bergman and would hope that the members of the committee would, uh, take that to, uh, take that to, take that as, uh, that word, those words of wisdom and incorporate that in their working in the meeting that they have, should this motion pass. Um, we have a motion on the floor in a second, um, to refer this to a smaller group to work with Nancy Stetson, and, um, that would be Counselors McGee, uh, Hightower, Travers, and Barlow. Um, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 And all those opposed, please say no.
No.
Uh, so, uh, Counselor Jank says no, um, and that motion passes 11 to one. Um, thank you so much, um, Director Tuttle and to, uh, Policy Analyst Stetson for being here, and, uh, we'll look forward to, uh, you coming back to us, uh, in the month of October. We will then move on to item 7.05, which is a school presentation, the Burlington High School, uh, and Burlington Technical Center project to include an update on funding efforts and other progress being made since our last meeting in August, which included a vote to place a bond on the November ballot. Uh, and I know we have Superintendent Tom Flanagan, uh, Chairperson Claire Wool, and others who are here, uh, to speak to this item. We've allotted, uh, we've allotted about 15 minutes for this, so if you could sort of split the difference with us and, uh, give us a brief update, which we are anxiously awaiting, and, uh, then we'll go to Counselor Questions and Comments. Um, thank you for being here. Uh, the floor is yours.
Great. Thank you very much for having us. I hope it's okay if we brought a couple of our members of, new members of our team up who you, well, they're not new members of our team, but members of our team that you haven't seen up here.
And certainly if you want to introduce them, that would be great.
I will do that. Yes. Um, so thank you so much, uh, for having us tonight, President Paul and City Council. We appreciate the opportunity to be here and we, um, are really grateful for your partnership throughout this process to, to all of you. Thank you. We are joined tonight by Joe White, our project manager from Whiting, and Jesse Beck, um, from Freeman, French Freeman. And Joe and Jesse have been key to the, to the, uh, project thus far and will continue with us, uh, throughout the project, as well as Chairperson Wool, um, is here. And so we'll move through. We will, we'll each take a couple of, um, or a couple of us will take a few points. We'll try to move, uh, relatively quickly, but not too fast, um, and, um, save time at the end for, for questions and discussion. So we're gonna, we're planning to update you on the MOU, uh, on our engagement efforts, on the financials, on the environmental work and permitting, uh, and the timeline. Um, we, there are three documents attached. Um, it's the September 6th NPA presentation. That's actually a presentation, an NPA presentation that we're giving at all the NPAs, so we've taken off the September 6th, uh, but the rest of the presentation is the same as we're giving to all of the NPA, uh, all the NPAs. Uh, we also have the September 6th Board Memo to the School Board, so you can see the information that we provided to the School Board. That memo has, has a number of links that many of them take you to our website in the landing page of our website. We are continuing to refresh with updated information about the project. Um, and, um, and then we have our memo to, to the city, to you all. Um, and those are, those are our three documents. First, the MOU, uh, the School Board approved, uh, on September 6th, uh, and Chairperson Wool signed the MOU, uh, late last week, so we're in the process of, uh, moving, moving that forward. We again appreciate the, the collaboration and partnership of the mayor, Mayor Weinberger, and, and City Council, uh, throughout that process. And, um, so that's, uh, an important step for us to document and to be clear on the, the way that we will work together through this process. One of those, one of those, um, uh, stipulations is that we are coming to you at regular, with some regularity, this being one of those times. So that's the MOU. We are continuing to, to fundraise actively. Um, we told you about our partnership with the Burlington Students Foundation. Uh, we have received, uh, about $50,000 in donations to the Burlington Student Foundation, uh, at this point. I think that's just a start for us with private philanthropy. Um, and we're going to continue to, to do that work. That really is just getting started. Uh, we're also pursuing, uh, similar to last time, multiple existing appropriations and grants in the FY 23 budgets, both federal and, and state budgets. I think, I, it feels like we're gaining traction in many of those, um, in, in, in a couple of, a couple of areas. Uh, and so I think we'll start to see that we will be eligible for some funding for, uh, to support this project, whether it be, uh, so, and, and there can be a number of different places where that could, that could happen. Uh, in addition to that, we're gearing up for FY 24, the FY 24 legislative session. So we're going to continue to work with Leonine Public Affairs and Maggie Lentz, and she's gonna, is helping us with our strategy on, on preparing for the FY 24 legislative cycle. So, uh, we're going to continue to, to work aggressively, uh, in, in that area. Um, and with that, I'm going to pass it over to, and the financials haven't changed from the original, uh, conversation. So those finding, the financials are still are on the, uh, presentation, the NPA presentation, and those haven't changed significantly, but we are, um, we have committed to, um, doing as much as we can so that we don't, do not have to borrow the full, uh, 165 million, uh, that we are asking voters to approve on November 8th, uh, if they were to approve that. And so we are truly committed to that. We already have 50, 50,000. Uh, that's a little in, in many ways, but also a lot, if you think about philanthropy and the first month of our, of our, of our kind of work with Burlington Students Foundation and getting that really, uh, running. So feeling good about that? With that, I'm going to pass it to Jesse, um, uh, to talk about architecture and engineering design update.
Sure. Good evening. Uh, we're proceeding on into the next phase of design, from schematic design into design development. So that allows the engineers to fully integrate into the team. We have, uh, we're keeping horizons and on-top in the locations that they are, so they have been removed from the floor plans that are in your report. That's helped us reduce the square footers to around 250,000 square feet. So as we work along through the building process, we're finding ways to tighten up the design, um, try to work towards reducing costs as we go, while keeping the quality strong. The, uh, sustainability aspects are now becoming more clear as we get more detail and engineering into the project. We are on a path to a, a high lead rating, silver or gold. We are looking at a path to net zero with the addition of, uh, PV systems and working with a third party to try to play that out. The good news on the sustainability front is that we're starting to work with BED and Vermont Gas, and we have a schedule of values, uh, for incentives, uh, of around 200 to 400,000 dollars. So there's some good savings that we can achieve as we work through that path to net zero. We have, uh, bid the construction manager role for pre-construction services and post-construction. Uh, the bid was awarded to Whiting Turner, who was the low bidder. And the good news is that our cost estimating that we've done to date by both, uh, independent cost estimators, uh, the bid was under those numbers. So we're tracking very well. You'll see some renderings in your packet, so we're starting to go into NPAs and public sessions with some more, uh, you know, building aesthetic information. So that's my report.
Thank you, Jesse. And we'll pass it to Joe to talk about the environmental work and permitting.
Sure. Thank you. Uh, so just to back up, just, I want to make sure that everyone is aware, uh, so the, our environmental consultants and district representatives have been meeting on a monthly basis with Vermont, uh, Department of Environmental Conservation and also EPA, uh, for the last couple of years since the school was closed down. So that communication, uh, with the regulators, uh, has been continuing, continuing and will continue, uh, in the coming months. Uh, site investigation reports for building materials and soils have been submitted and reviewed by the regulatory agencies, and the team is now in the process of preparing a building materials corrective action plan, or CAP, and is shooting to have that submitted and approved by Vermont DEC and EPA by mid-November. Uh, simultaneously with that, the environmental team is also preparing a demo and abatement big package with a target of awarding, uh, that package to a, an abatement contractor, uh, also in mid-November. So that would be right after the CAP is officially approved. And, uh, assuming we're able to keep this timeline going, uh, this will allow for demo and abatement to commence as early as late December or early January. Regarding permitting, we have begun the local permitting process. Uh, we met with the Technical Review Committee several weeks ago. We've met with a couple NPAs, and, uh, we also presented the sketch plan application to the DRB a couple of weeks ago. Uh, the design team is currently, uh, working on plans and supporting documents to get them to a level where we can submit the COA Level Two zoning permit application at the end of this month, so by September 30th. And our, you know, our goal is to get that submitted on the 30th, and we're projecting to have DRB approval by the end of November. Uh, one item that I believe Superintendent Flanagan wants to discuss, or at least raise tonight, is the issue of the zoning permit fees and development review fees. Uh, those fees total about 165,000 dollars for this project, which we will be required to submit at the end of this month when we submit that, that zoning application. Um, so I think you wanted to maybe talk about some opportunities for potential waivers.
Are you done?
I am done.
Okay. Thank you, Joe. Yeah, so I think, um, for discussion later, we, we would like to make a formal request, um, to waive the permitting fees that, uh, Joe just mentioned. Um, and so we can, we can discuss that. And, and lastly, I just wanted to give a sense of the engagement, uh, timeline. So our engagement timeline, we, we are in NPA season. Uh, we're doing two this week. We did one or two last week. We're, we're doing, uh, making sure we're getting out to, to the NPAs. We have two town halls. September 21st is the first one, October 19th is the second. Mail-in ballots on the 26th for a vote on November 8th, and, um, demo is scheduled to begin January 2023, assuming, hoping that the, the voters approve, um, the, the bond. So at that point, at, with that, I'll leave it for discussion.
Thank you. Thank you all for being here. Uh, are there questions or comments from the council on this update? And then perhaps we'll go to the administration after. I'll, I'm looking online to see if there's anyone with a hand up. Doesn't appear to be the case right now. Um, Counselor Travers.
Thank you, President Paul, and, and thank you all again for that presentation. It's nice to have you back and it's great to hear, uh, the efforts that you've undertaken and the progress you've made. So thanks very much to that. Um, the, uh, one point that you just mentioned there that sits heaviest with me is that ballots are being mailed to voters two weeks from today, and folks will have an opportunity here in Burlington not that long from now to begin, uh, voting on this item. So I appreciate your all's efforts to be out there and engaged. It's a reminder to me, uh, as a big supporter of this project, it's something that I think is completely necessary for our city to continue to thrive, uh, that, uh, I need to, uh, wearing my counselor hat, be out there and engage in the community a bit more. And I suppose if this is a call to action to my colleagues here on the council as well as, uh, as well as any folks, uh, who are tuning into this meeting, who are interested in seeing this project through, uh, that now is the time for us to be out there and to be engaging with neighbors and to supporting this, uh, given that, uh, again, folks will have an opportunity to vote on it just two weeks from today. Uh, so thank you, and, and I'm looking forward to getting out there in the coming weeks and months.
Thank you, Counselor Travers. Uh, are there other counselors with either? Are there other counselors with either questions or comments on the presentation, or questions that you have of the school leadership? Counselor Barlow.
Thank you, President Paul, and thank you for the update. Just following up on what Counselor Travers said, if there are engagement opportunities, if you could let all of us know how we can be helpful to you, that would be, that would be good.
Yes. That was my responsibility tonight, to inform you. Tomorrow night, September 13th, we have our BHS open house for the first time in three years. We'll be inviting all four grades and parents, families, guardians to BHS. Now, we know BHS, the students currently there, the ninth graders, would be 12th graders at the opening of the new school. So we'll also be attending the middle school, Edmonds and Hunt as well. But tomorrow night is our kickoff night to our internal community, high school, and signing families, guardians, like I said, up and students to help us in this campaign. We plan to kick off this campaign on September 21st with the open house, where we'll inform the public, as well as engage yourself via email with an invitation to go to door-to-door with us with printed materials. This is a grassroots effort on behalf of the 12 school board members present and online tonight, as well as the 12 city counselors and mayor, because we know district leadership cannot be part of that campaign. So yes, the answer is you will receive an email from myself and the entire board inviting you to these public engagement events, as well as Honk and Waves. We have an entire campaign timeline and signs that will be distributed shortly in the coming weeks. So thank you for your offer of support, and we appreciate that greatly.
Thank you. Well, we all love a good Honk and Wave. Thank you, Counselor Barlow. Were there any, Mayor Weinberger?
Thank you, President Paul. I'll just add a couple of quick things. In addition to these great events, just heard from Claire, people who want to come and talk to Tom about the project, ask questions, are welcome to come to the Bagel this Wednesday at 8:00 in the morning. The coffee that I have every week out there is going to be dedicated to the project this week, and it's a good example to talk directly about the project. And I just, I'm really excited to hear that the campaign is taking shape and planned out. And echoing Counselor Travers's points, I do, certainly, I want to be a resource for you and do anything I can to help with the campaign. And I think if you look back on some of the key ballot items we've had together over the last decade, there being concerted organized effort between the council and the administration to make the support clear has been important, and look forward to partnering with you in the weeks just ahead, as Counselor Travers points out. Thanks for the, being back here and giving this update, and I look forward to, we'll say, the fundraising effort and the conversations with volunteer figures, the momentum of that is picking up. And I'm going to be attending, maybe virtually, but somehow joining in a meeting later this week with a state commissioner. And I, you know, appreciate and see that the effort is starting to get some momentum, and I look forward to working to support you there as we've committed in the MOU.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Weinberger. Seeing no other comments, we'll look forward to the next update and to the public engagement opportunity, I'm sorry, Counselor House, I'm sorry. Please go ahead.
Hi, yes, sorry, my computer's been a bit wonky. Thank you, President Paul. Yeah, I just, I also want to, you know, express my support for this. And I really kind of think of our school system almost like preventative medicine. You know, we talk so much about, you know, issues facing our community and challenges, you know, such as addiction, crime, all of these things. And schools really can be a mitigating factor to this, and students through this project are going to feel such a sense of pride, such a sense of belonging. And so this is a, an incredibly important project. And yeah, thank you, Counselor Travers, for that, for that call to action. I could not agree more.
Thank you. Thanks, Counselor House. If there aren't others, and it doesn't, doesn't appear that there are other counselors who have comments and questions, we'll look forward to the next update and the community engagement opportunities that you've laid out for us. And in the meantime, just want to again express our collective enthusiastic support for the project, and thank you for being here. Seeing no objection, we'll place the informational and presentation items that you provided on file with our thanks, and look forward to our next update from you. Thank you again for being here. We'll move on to seven, item 7.06, which is a security camera system update and expansion. For this item, we have CIO Scott Barker with us, who can give us a brief overview on this. Welcome once again, and thanks for, thanks for hanging out with us for a little while between this and the work session. Before we go to a brief overview of the item, I'll look to Counselor Travers for a motion on this item.
I move to approve and authorize the Chief Innovation Officer to execute a contract with Royal Group in an amount not to exceed $425,000 to purchase the FLIR security camera system and all necessary server equipment from Royal Group, subject to final review and approval by the City Attorney's Office.
Thank you, Counselor Travers. We have a motion and a second, seconded by Counselor Carpenter. Thank you very much, Counselor Carpenter. CIO Barker, if you could, we did discuss it at the Board of Finance, but if you could certainly give us a brief overview, and then also the memo that you did submit to us later in the afternoon, if you could, if you could summarize those items as well.
Sure. So in summary, the quick rundown of this, of this is that the current security camera system software and servers are end-of-life, out of date, and need to be updated so that we can continue to meet the needs of the city across any of the buildings, public spaces, things like that, where we have security cameras. The system is built out in two pieces. One is the software and the servers that is designed to run the security camera systems. And then there is money in the quote as well, or in the proposal, to buy an additional 100 cameras, both for break fix. We know that there are 12 to 15 cameras that are not working right now that we need to replace right away. We also know that there's 15 to 20 that we know that we need to add in certain areas. And then the rest of it, as any of you have paid attention to supply chain issues in the technology world, as well as grocery stores and other places, trying to make sure that we can, as we can get them, we can get them in and have them available for down the road. I am kind of a, let me see if I can find my memo that I sent later in the day. To give a quick summary of that, it basically boils down to, we have, we've priced the, or we've sized the servers, even though the system itself, the software itself, can carry up to 600 cameras, we don't have any intention of doing that anytime soon, and it's not intended to expand like that. In fact, we've only built the servers out in that proposal to cover about 280 cameras. We do know there is some growth that we need to have over the course of the next two to three years. The system is designed to be ready to go for five to seven years. With the typical security and coverage that you would expect on anything like this, it is not a true monitoring system as much as it is. Everything goes through dispatch, and it can be used for gathering information after an incident, where we can try to identify people and places, et cetera. So this is not something that anyone outside of the police dispatch has availability or access to. It's, as I was mentioning earlier, it's ironically one of the few systems in the city that we propose, purchase, help install, and then never get to touch again. We don't have admin privileges. We don't have even regular privileges on that system. It's all through police dispatch.
Thank you. Thanks for that overview. We'll go to questions or comments from the council. And actually, Counselor Travers, did you want the floor back after? No? Okay. So if there are counselors who have questions, now would be the time. Counselor McGee.
Thank you, President Paul, and thank you, Scott, for sticking around and for fielding the questions that I had over the weekend.
No problem.
I will be voting no on this, as it's proposed tonight, and as I discussed at the Board of Finance. It's not that I don't understand that the system is at end-of-life, and that these upgrades need to be made in order for the cameras we currently have to continue operating, or that, and I also understand that there are a select few areas that would benefit from having new security cameras. The concerns that I have relate mostly to the scope and the scale of these updates. And I have serious concerns about the initial purchase of 100 cameras, as well as concerns about the potential capacity of this system to hold up to 600 cameras if we were to go to the full capacity that is allowed under these upgrades. Without seeing the policy that is used for camera deployment, without seeing the policy connected to how the video captured is used, I can't support this item tonight. So I will leave it there for now.
Thank you, Counselor McGee. We'll go to Counselor Hightower, and then if there are others, please raise your hand.
I have similar concerns as to what Counselor McGee just said. I think especially around the policy. I don't necessarily disagree with the five-year plan, or even with having the extra cameras on hand for when things break down. I do think that spending another half a million on a security system, and I haven't seen how we're going to use that, or don't have enough information, which is no fault of Scott's in any way, shape, or form. He gave us so much information before this meeting, but I think I would need to see a policy. I guess my ask is that the administration, and I know that individual counselors aren't supposed to ask for things, but that Public Safety Committee would do some review, the administration would give some presentation of how, what our actual policy is on these cameras. Because I think right now, if a constituent came to me and asked, like, oh, my property was stolen, can we use those cameras to retrieve it? I don't even know the answer to that. So, yeah, I think I want a better understanding of what level of crime this is used for, and how we use it, and how we grow the program, if at all, and what that decision-making looks like before I can approve this. Thank you.
Thanks, Counselor Hightower. We'll go to Counselor Barlow, and then Counselor Bergman.
Thanks, President Paul. I had a question about, you said that the cameras aren't, they're not monitored, they're just used after the fact by dispatch to, to see if, you know, if there's additional evidence, I guess, about incidents that happen. What's the retention policy on the video?
Today, my understanding is that dispatch keeps it for 90 days.
90 days. And the other concern I had was that, in your memo from this afternoon, it says that the cost will increase by 15 to 20% if we don't act by September 17th.
That is correct.
So that's even before our next meeting. And, you know, I just did the quick math, it's on the $425,000 that you were asking for, that's somewhere between $63,715 and $85,000 more than what, if we execute a contract with the vendor before then. Is that correct?
It is not an insignificant amount of increase, correct?
Okay. Well, I'm, I am supportive of this, and I will be voting yes tonight.
Thank you, Counselor Barlow. We'll go to Counselor Bergman.
Thank you, President Paul. I share the concerns that my colleagues, McGee and Hightower, have expressed, but I do think that the cost increase is significant, and it is worth our going forward. I would like to see a presentation by the administration on the policies, on the way that this is going to fit into the big public safety strategy that we have, and be able to explain all of that to, to the public as well, to make this a public presentation. I think the people of Burlington deserve to hear that, and, and feel assured by the public presentation that the privacy concerns that people may have are going to not be real concerns. So I hope that we will do that. I am voting in favor of this, on the expectation that the administration will, will have that, that public session, so that the people can get the best of all worlds, the savings and the, the extra security, and all of the information that they need to know that Big Brother is not there.
Thank you, Counselor Bergman. Counselor Shannon.
Thank you, President Paul. Thank you for doing the work on this and helping us advance our public safety in this way. We don't have all the tools that we would like to have to provide the public safety that our residents expect, and we hear that on a daily basis from our residents. I see this as something that can fill in our gaps. And while in general I have privacy concerns, I don't really have privacy concerns about this. I think that Big Brother is out there, and Big Brother is all of us. It's every one of us running around out there with cell phones that can record what everybody in the public space is doing, and publish it on social media, and people do on a regular basis. I don't think that the city should, we actually also feel it's very important that all of our police officers wear these cameras, that they turn them on when they're interacting with the public. And so it seems to me not to really be balanced to prohibit us from having cameras that maybe can record an incident before the police officers arrive. Many communities all over the country have live cams, where everybody can view the cameras all the time, so we can all view it. I think it's important that people know we have cameras out there, but I do think we all know there are cameras out there all over our neighborhoods. I am not really concerned with the numbers, you know, if we're talking about putting cameras in City Hall Park, whether we put two, or 20, or 100 in City Hall Park. I think we are trying to provide some accountability in public safety. I would be all for putting cameras on every bike rack in this city at this point. We're getting complaints about gardeners in Callahan Park who don't feel safe. I think there's a lot of opportunities to, you know, to record what's happening, to potentially hold people accountable. And certainly, when we're talking about the gunfire incidents, the violent crime that is rapidly escalating in our community sadly, these are tools that can give victims, families closure when the worst thing you can imagine happens, and it's been happening here to our community members. I want to know that the city is doing all that we can to solve those kinds of crimes. And I think that the cameras give us a lot of opportunity. And there was a day when that wasn't true, you know, that we were concerned about even putting cameras on the, on the stoplights, because not everybody had one in their pocket. But in a day where everyone has one in their pocket, I think the public expects that. There isn't a right to privacy in the public space. We're not talking about peering into people's windows. We're not talking about peering into people's windows, though I do think there should be a policy that we don't do that. And so I agree, let's find out what the policy is. Let's have some parameters around that. But I do have confidence that that's not what we're looking to do here. So, thank you, and I hope that the council will support this investment in public safety. It's one of the things that we can do. We can't do all the things that we would like to do at this point.
Thank you, Counselor Shannon. We'll go to Counselor House.
Thank you, President Paul. I think what I have to add to this debate is that inequity and bias, whether conscious or unconscious, is pervasive and it's a systemic issue. And we know historically that, you know, our government has, you know, whether it's intentional or unintentional, created policies that are biased and that disproportionately impact people with marginalized identities. And I do, you know, feel concerned moving forward with this without fully understanding how and where these cameras will be used. I think with great power comes great responsibility, as cliche as that is. And so I really call on the administration to come forward with a plan for how they intend to use this surveillance. You know, I hear the public safety concerns that are out there. You know, I, you know, feel some of them myself, I think. But, you know, I want to know how this technology is going to be used. So help, you know, help me understand that. And, you know, I understand that we need a new security system. We need an upgrade. But I'd really like to know how that technology is going to be used.
Thank you, Counselor House. Counselor McGee.
Thank you, President Paul. I just want to note that at the Board of Finance, I did express an interest in supporting a version of this contract that would allow for us to upgrade the current security system, which, with the software and the servers, which is the part of the contract where we're seeing the increase on September 17th. So I just want to be clear about that, that that is not connected to the number of cameras and that my hope was that we could separate out the conversation about the cameras to a later date. I think, you know, additionally, to Counselor Shannon's point, the video that we can all have in our pocket isn't funneled directly to police dispatch. So to the extent that that could potentially be used against somebody, I think there are barriers to police accessing that. And I just want to challenge the notion that more security cameras lead to more safety. I think we have spent a lot of time in this room talking about measures that are reactive, that are responding to crime. We haven't had nearly enough conversations in this room about preventing crime. And so I would like to see some of the money that is maybe going towards this contract. I know it wouldn't come from the IT budget, but I think the point is true that we need to invest more in prevention than we are right now. And we need to have that conversation more explicitly. So, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor McGee. Not seeing any other comments from, oh, Mayor Weinberger.
Thank you, President Paul. I wanted to say thank you to Scott for, in another area, and I think you're making a habit out of this, identifying an area where we need to act to address a real gap in our IT infrastructure. And thank you for moving swiftly to bring a plan forward that, you know, addresses a concerning situation where this system that we have relied on for years needs investment or could be compromised. And I appreciate, Counselor Bergman, that the, that you're, the comfort you expressed in moving forward while still having some questions that I think are fair questions. You know, we have, over time, discussed and made decisions at this table, you know, largely, you know, some of these years ago before many of the current members. But, you know, over time, the city's use of cameras has expanded. And I think we'll make good on the idea that we should find a way to have that discussion and have the parts of it, at least, that can be public. I think there may be elements of it that, you know, questions that would be legitimate for counselors to have that you might, that maybe would be best handled in some kind of privileged communication as we do with a number of security conversations. And, but I very much appreciate not making this necessary decision subject to hashing out, at this stage, some new or expanded policy. I think we can have that conversation and see what additional policy work seems appropriate. And so I appreciate the spirit of finding a way to get this done tonight. In terms, you know, one thing that will be in that presentation, and it's very, I think these cameras serve a number of different roles. They serve some deterrent roles. Certainly, one of the ways that we, that I think many members of the public feel much safer in our garages, knowing that there are a lot of cameras in our public garages, which is, you know, makes up a large component of the existing camera infrastructure. It's an area where the public, you know, there's long been concerns about the safety and the sense of safety in those facilities. And just having the cameras there does improve some of that. Another way we use these, and it's, you know, just it is coincidental, but notable that we're having this debate a week after we, the Bronx Police Department quickly solved the homicide from a couple of weeks ago. And if you read the affidavit or talked, looked, watched the press conference that we had last week or the media around it, it's very clear that the security cameras played a critical role in being able to reconstruct events that led up to that homicide. And so these are important tools. I welcome that it seems we have a way forward and happy to keep the conversation going about where this, where our use of these tools goes in the future.
Thank you, Mayor Weinberger. Counselor Hanson, and then we'll try to go to a vote from there.
Thanks. I'm just hoping, because I'm a little confused following this debate, if someone can clarify, is voting yes on this, is that voting to expand the city's footprint in terms of camera coverage or not? That's what I'm trying to understand, and that my vote really hinges on that. So if someone could please clarify, that would be helpful.
Yes, of course. Go ahead.
I'm sorry about that, President Paul. No, I believe this proposal is strictly about, do we go forward with replacing the system, replacing the server, replacing the software, and then buying the extra cameras? There's no, there's nothing in this proposal that talks about expansion beyond very specific places that have needed them for some period of time. This is not about a general expansion of 100 cameras.
Okay, so it expands the stock, but it doesn't expand the deployment?
Correct. It expands potential stock but not active.
Okay, that's helpful. Thank you.
Okay, great. Thank you, Counselor Hanson. Seeing no other comments or questions. So just to get back to the motion, the motion has been made and seconded. And this is to approve and authorize the chief innovation officer to execute a contract with Royal Group and to purchase the FLIR security camera system as identified in the motion. It appears as though it might be best if we go to a roll call vote on this. If the clerk could call the roll, please.
Counselor Barlow?
Yes.
Counselor Bergman?
Yes.
Counselor Carpenter?
Yes.
Counselor Jang?
Yes.
Counselor Freeman?
No.
Counselor Hanson?
Yes.
Counselor Hightower?
No.
Counselor House?
No.
Counselor McGee?
No.
Counselor Shannon?
Yes.
Counselor Travers?
Yes.
City Council, President Paul?
Yes.
Eight ayes, four nays.
The motion passes. And we will, and thank you very much to Scott. Thanks for being here and for your work on this. The next item on our agenda, and we will move on to Item 7.07, which is a resolution regarding ranked choice voting in mayoral elections. And I'll come to Counselor Hanson for a motion on this item, please.
I'll move that we waive the reading and refer the resolution to the Charter Change Committee with a request that the committee returns the resolution to the full council by our October 24, 2022, meeting.
Did you want the floor back after a second?
Sure.
Okay.
Yeah, please.
Great, thank you. And that would be seconded by Counselor McGee. So we'll go back to you, Counselor Hanson. The floor is yours.
Great, thanks. I don't have a lot, I think we've, hopefully, we all understand this issue. We've been debating it for years now. And, you know, we've had a public vote on the issue. That public vote was limited to council elections. I think all the reasons that we, that the council advanced this to voters for council elections are also true of mayoral elections as well. And I think seven of us previously supported that, you know, taking that action. It was vetoed. We didn't end up moving that forward. But I think we still, now, you know, since in the intervening time, we've gotten to see where voters are at on this issue and saw strong approval from voters. So I think it's, we should give them the opportunity to expand this system. If they so choose, it'll be up to them. But I think they've shown a preference for ranked choice voting. And I think we should give them the chance to expand that system further. It's, we learned from the first iteration that, well, I mean, we already knew this. It takes a long time for a charter change to work its way through the legislature and for us to be able to use it. So I think getting the ball rolling is important and getting this to the voters. So there would be some opportunity for the Charter Change Committee to look at this over the next month, you know, month plus. But ideally, the goal would be to get this on the March 2023 ballot. Thank you.
I'm a little disappointed that the legislature wasn't, it was COVID. And I do understand why the legislature wasn't able to move forward with our previous charter change more quickly so that we could have had that in place. People could have used it. We could have then moved on to consider whether or not to implement it in the mayoral election. And with this timeline, we're not going to have that kind of opportunity. But I, as we approach our next mayoral election, I just really didn't want to be put in the position again of discouraging some people to vote because, I'm sorry, not discouraging people to vote, but discouraging people from running based on the spoiler effect, which we're particularly vulnerable to in Burlington. And I think that we tend to look at these voting systems as to, you know, did it produce a result that we liked? Under the current system, we have produced many results that I personally have not liked. That's probably true for everybody at the table. I don't blame the voting system. I hate to say it. I do blame the voters sometimes, but I don't blame the voting system. Any voting system can deliver to us results we like, results we don't like. It's going to evolve with time, whether it favors one party or another party, whatever system that we use. And I think that what we really want to look for is a voting system that best serves democracy, that engages the public, and that produces a result that is reflective of the voter's will. And for that reason, I know that many people I respect disagree with me, but I will continue to support ranked choice voting and hope this council is able to move that forward. Thank you.
Thanks, Counselor Shannon. Any other counselors, Counselor Barlow?
Thank you, President Paul. I was under the understanding that we would try RCV on the council elections and then review how it worked before we expanded it to other elections. And we haven't done that yet, just for that very simple reason. I'm not supporting this tonight.
Thank you, Counselor Barlow. We'll go now to Counselor Hightower.
I just have a question for Counselor Hanson, if that's okay, which is that we didn't extend this to school board members. And I wonder, just because with this, we're doing city councilors and the mayor, why we didn't want to do all of the local offices?
Sure, I do want to do all the local offices. This was based on what I thought was gonna find the most support among other counselors. But for me personally, I would prefer to include the school commission in this.
Great, then I guess just a comment as this goes to charter change. I wonder if that's something you all could discuss? Because I wonder, not that I necessarily think we will have the most competitive races for a school board, but I think the logic that we're using for mayors and city councilors also applies to school boards. So I don't know why we would leave, why we would leave them out of it at this point. Thank you.
Thanks, Counselor Hightower. Seeing no other comments, we have a motion which was seconded, and we can go to a vote. And keeping in mind that the recommended, the action is to waive the reading and refer the resolution to the Charter Change Committee with a request that the committee returns the resolution to the full council by our meeting on October 24. With that said, we can go to a vote. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 And all those opposed, please say no.
No.
So that motion passes 10 to 2. Which brings us to Item 7.08, a presentation of the annual report of the Burlington Police Commission. And I believe that one of the co-chairs of the commission, Commissioner Gamache, is joining us by Zoom. And I think you were able to find him. And so we'll bring him up on the screen and... I can certainly, give me just a moment. I'll, I'll text him and ask. Well, just in the interest of time, we could, I have not received a response from that text. And we'll see whether or not that is, it doesn't, does that person not have their microphone? They're still on mute? Okay. You know, that, that, yeah, they're, they're, they're still on mute. And you've tried, you've enabled, yeah. Okay, well, hopefully, they'll respond by, by text. And I don't know if that, I don't know if that's him. So why don't we, why don't we move on to, in the hopes that we get a response? We'll move on to the next item and then come back to 7.08. The next item is 7.09, which is a communication, a request to execute a ground lease agreement with Beta Technologies in the so-called Valley, West Valley of the Burlington International Airport. Before we get to the communication from Nick Longo, the Acting Director of Aviation, I would, will have a motion on the ground lease agreement. And with that, I'll go to Counselor Shannon.
Thank you, President Paul. I move to authorize the leasing of certain identified space at the Burlington International Airport to Beta Technologies, Inc., and to authorize the mayor of Burlington to execute the ground lease agreement subject to final review and approval by the city attorney's office.
Thank you, Counselor Shannon, for that motion. Is there a second to that motion? Counselor, Counselor Jiang, thank you very much. And with that, we'll go to Nick Longo, who can, we did discuss this fairly extensively at the Board of Finance. And if you could perhaps give us that, that overview. And as well, I noticed that Jeff Glassberg is also joining us by Zoom.
Perfect. Absolutely. Thank you, Council President. Again, we're talking about Beta Technologies. This is a separate and distinct location at the airport. This is a much smaller location and a site that Beta Technologies is looking to develop and build a approximate 25,000 square foot hangar on what we call the Valley West apron. This is a currently vacant apron that was built with federal funding some time ago. And we're very excited to see Beta as a respondent to our public process over the last few years. We also have received communications from the school district associated with the, with the technical center for the various programs that they have identified. And we have specifically identified those uses and, and physical locations separate from this lease, meaning that we withdrew slight location from the Beta lease to, to make sure that we are prepared for any future use on that particular apron. There also is, this is a 30-year initial lease with the option for two, essentially 10-year leases at 10, and just shy of a 10-year lease if Beta Technologies meets the specific milestones of development, which is, of course, the Phase 2 portion of this building, which is an additional 60,000 square foot space, another investment on that particular location in which they will be granted the additional two 10-year option agreements. There is no rent credit, unlike the larger lease that we just approved with Beta Technologies. Rent essentially starts upon receiving the certificate of occupancy. And once again, we're very excited to see that, that apron and additional development by Beta Technologies, which will be the primary use as a culture and educational facility as well as to store their new electric aircraft. Online, I do have Shelby Lozier, the Director of Ground Transportation, as well as Jeff Glassberg, if there are any questions.
Thank you, Nick, as well. Yes, I did want to, glad, thank you for acknowledging that you've got Shelby with you as well. Are there questions? Or actually, I don't know if either Shelby or Jeff, do you have anything that you'd like to add to this? Or, and I also see Jeremy Farkas as well.
I'm happy to add a few comments, just to reinforce Nick's points. This opportunity takes a currently vacant, undeveloped, non-income-producing site and leverages that to permit the investment of capital by others at the airport. It will generate income for the airport and it will support the growth of Beta, which, as we discussed back in July, when we brought forth the, the larger transaction for their manufacturing facility, is really about groundbreaking technology, significant job growth for the region, and the multiplier effects of all of that. This is an arms-length, market-based transaction. As Nick mentioned, there are no discounts or rent credits associated with this. There's no investment of capital required by the city or the airport. Upon occupancy, it should generate about $60,000 a year in income to the airport, which will grow based on CPI under the terms of the lease. Further, under the terms of the lease, we've preserved a footprint adjacent to this leased area sufficient to cite the Burlington Technical Center with opportunities for program collaboration among Beta and the Technical Center. In signing this lease, Beta is also committing to providing infrastructure sufficient to serve that adjacent Technical Center. The lease also contains a provision under which Beta will fund a capital reserve so that when the building reverts to the airport at the end of the lease term, it will have been, that building will have been properly maintained. And the city could choose to either take over the building at that point or to use the funds in the capital reserve to take the building down if that were its choice.
Thank you so much, Jeff, for, for that. Were there, Jeremy or Shelby, did you have anything else that you wanted to add? And then we'll go to questions. No? Okay, thank you very much. Are there questions from counselors? Seeing none, then we will, we will go to a vote. A motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor of the motion with regard to executing the ground lease agreement with Beta Technologies, please say aye.
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 And any opposed, please say no. We'll note, the vote is 10, 10 yes, one who is not present, Counselor House, and one recusal from Counselor Travers. And that motion passes. I was able to get in touch with, regarding item 7.08, with Co-Chair Gamache, who unfortunately, there was some confusion as to the timing of this presentation, and he is not available to join us this evening. With that, I would entertain a motion to postpone this item to our meeting on September 19. And that was, that is made by Counselor Jiang and seconded by Counselor McGee. This is debatable. Is there anyone who has a comment or question on that? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion to postpone, please say aye.
Aye.
And any opposed, please say no. That motion passes. Thank you very much for, for doing that. Which brings us to the end of our deliberative agenda. And we find ourselves with the good fortune of it being 10 o'clock and being able to complete our agenda. And that brings us to item 8, committee reports. Are there counselors who have committee reports? Counselor Barlow?
This is my first committee report.
Oh, how exciting.
The Tax Abatement Committee is having an organizational meeting on Tuesday, September 20 at 5:00 PM in the Green Mountain Conference Room. We'll be discussing our mission statement and reviewing webpage content related to tax abatement and to the financial aid programs.
Thank you, Counselor Barlow. Counselor Hightower?
Yes, this is an update as much for the city councilors as for the members of the public, which is that CDNR is at least working towards a resolution to bring a home share program in front of the council that is meant to encourage more folks to provide affordable housing in exchange for house shares. So we're hoping to bring an incentive program along those lines, potentially from CDNR. So we reviewed a proposal for that, or maybe gonna look at a resolution for it at our next CDNR meeting, which is tomorrow. And we did not have a CDNR meeting in August.
Thank you, Counselor Hightower. Any other committee chairs or others that have a, Counselor Bergman?
So the Charter Change Committee will meet tomorrow night. And we will be continuing to discuss the all-legal resident voting in non, in local elections, as well as another item on the citing of polling places. There is a desire, particularly in light of the work going on with redistricting, to consider greater flexibility in the, the citing, the ability to cite a polling place that would be in close proximity, but not necessarily within the individual ward. And that is different than the way we do things right now. Would require a charter change, in my opinion. And it is something that we've been discussing with ward officials, the, the ward clerks and the ward inspectors of election, as well as the Board of Voter Registration and anybody who has attended from the public. So we'll be doing that tomorrow night. And then we will take a couple of weeks off so one member can enjoy themselves for a couple of weeks. And then pick up and take on the, the question of ranked choice voting, which I believe, if it was good enough for Sarah Palin, it should be good enough for us.
Thank you, Counselor Bergman. Don't know really what to say after that. Are there? Are there, are there other counselors with committee reports? If there aren't, then we can move on to item number nine, which is City Council, General City Affairs. Are there counselors who wish to give and offer comments on general city affairs? Oh, Counselor McGee?
Thank you, President Paul. I just wanted to take a moment to recognize the passing of a constituent of mine and an advocate here in the city, Tony Reddington, who we are all very familiar with. Many, many emails regarding public, excuse me, transportation and public works and especially roundabouts. So I'm hopeful that this body can find a way to honor Tony's legacy of advocacy and look forward to having conversations about that in the weeks ahead.
Thank you, Counselor McGee. Any other counselors with general city affairs comments? Seeing none, we'll go on to Council President updates. I do have one update, just to give you a heads up. On our first meeting in October, which is October 17, we are going to have a field trip hosted by the Burlington Conservation Board that will happen before the council meeting. They would like to share with us some of the nature-based climate action projects that have been currently launched in the city. And these initiatives include tree planting, heat mitigation, storm water and flood resilience, and inclusive nature connection, local ecologically sound food production. And to that end, we're gonna, we will be going to two locations in the city, one at the Intervale and the other at Champlain Elementary. We haven't worked out all the details, but it appears as though we will start the field trip at 5:00 PM. So if you want to mark your calendars for the October 17 meeting, we will be starting that meeting earlier. With that, that brings us to the final item of the evening, item number 11, which is updates from the mayor. Mayor Weinberger?
Thank you, President Paul. Just one announcement, one thing I'd like to bring people's attention to tonight. Could have had this in the climate emergency report, I suppose. But we, this Saturday is the Net Zero Energy Festival at the Burlington Electric Department. They've done events like this in the past. I don't think we've called it a Net Zero Energy Festival before, a supercharged day of family fun. And there's, you know, champ and DJs and ice cream and kids' games and stuff. There's also real opportunities for Burlingtonians to test drive electric vehicles, test ride e-bikes, see demonstrations on heat pumps and solar power options, and get expert advice on how, what you can do with your household to move the community closer to the Net Zero Energy goal. There's, this is really an area that, there's gonna be lots of opportunities, even more opportunities in, in the months and years ahead. The Inflation Reduction Act that just passed, the federal government, as we've mentioned before, really reinforces what we're trying to do here in Burlington with the move towards electrification. There will be substantial federal incentives around, especially building improvements. This festival is an opportunity to go and talk to BED experts, talk to others who have made these kind of investments and consider what you might be able to do with your, your home or vehicle. That's it. Thanks, President Paul.
Thank you. Thanks, Mayor Weinberger, for that update. That brings us to the end of our agenda. I would ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
From Counselor McGee and seconded by Counselor, Counselor Carpenter. All those in favor of the motion to adjourn, please say aye.
Aye.
And all those opposed, please say no. We are adjourned at nine minutes after 10:00.